Is it connected to my cell?
Yeah.
I was going to fire it up, right? Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'd like to, uh, thank all of you for coming out tonight, uh, for tonight's meeting, and, uh, I would like to now call to order the Chesterfield Planning Commission meeting on June third, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock, seven P. M. Uh, with that, I would like to, uh, acknowledge, uh, Robert Seaver, Township Attorney's here, Jonathan Palin, Township Planner, Stephanie Osborne, and I'm first-
Ava Miller.
Ava Miller is here. Um, if you would please silence your phones so they don't ring tonight, I appreciate that. And with that, uh, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Anybody got a flag?
Okay. Just gonna put a flag up on the screen.
Off to a good start.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I would like to call roll for the commission, uh, Rick LaBelle.
Here.
Kathy Bosberg.
Here.
Richard Brokaw.
Here.
Brian Carr.
Here.
Ralph Jaworski.
Here.
James Klonowski.
Here.
Mark Renault.
Here.
Eric Hyder.
Here.
Carl Leonard, I'm here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Eric Hyder, to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Support.
Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Rick LaBelle, to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, the, the next thing we have here is we have public comments. Uh, you can talk about anything you want. Uh, we are going to have a public hearing, and it'll be opportunities for you to come up and talk at that point. Um, the public hearing, uh, well, anyways, the public comments, if you have anything, uh, other than what's on the agenda, if you'd like to come up, or you can talk about anything you want, you got three minutes, if anybody would like to come up. Please, please sign in and, uh, state your name and sign in. Okay, uh, oh.
Hi, my name is Christine Zampick, I live in the Salt River condos. I'm curious what, I didn't see any, I think, on the plans as far as a second entrance or other access points into this community that they want to build here.
All right. The public hearing will get more in, into, uh, those types of questions if you want to hold off, but the public hearing is only about ordinance, or the zoning change. It's not about any engineering, roads, it's not about any of, of that right now.
Okay.
That's yet to come, and this is strictly just to, uh, change the zoning from what it was to what's being proposed.
Okay.
That's the only thing that we have information on that.
What is this going to do to our property values of our homes?
I'm sorry?
What is this going to do to the property values of our homes with all these going in here?
Uh, it's- Well, yeah, I can't re- respond to all the comments here, but, uh, some of that might come out tonight. Um, it, it was zoned to have homes in there already, all they're doing is just looking for a little change on the rezoning to, uh, to still build homes in there, so.
Right.
I'm not sure how that would, uh, do anything with the values, but I won't be able to respond, any of us will be able to respond back and forth, we'll be here till four o'clock in the morning, so, thank you.
If you're gonna make public comments, if you could take the sign-in sheet and put it on the side, and that way you can sign in before you step to the podium to speak, that'd be real helpful, speed things up.
If there's going to be a lot of folks coming up to talk, it'd probably be better to sign in ahead of time. Uh, this is just in general, public comments, um, so there might be more people later on, not sure. Thank you, state your name and-
Uh, my name's Colleen Cordell, I live on Baker. Uh, my concern with the rezoning is, um, fitting more homes into the property than originally planned, it's a watershed issue, um, there's been extreme flooding on the property, I have videos, I have pictures from just this year, um, several times, since I've lived here, and I've only lived here four years, the property has flooded all the way up to the property line, um, and it's had water shooting four to six feet out the sewers that are behind the homes, um, and it's also flooded on the road all the way up to the front of our house once, so there's really big concern on water mitigation and flooding for the existing homes, not only around the area, but down the Salt River, um, so that's the biggest concern I have. Flooding has been a really big issue, obviously, with our country in the last year, we've seen a lot of historic flooding, and the flooding that's already happening and has gotten worse since the additional sub was put in at the end of Baker, um, is very concerning.
Anthony Peters, I live, uh, on Baker in Weathervein, and the Salt River runs right behind my house, uh, when I first-
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
Just, real quick, we're still on public comments, correct? I, I just want to clarify for the public that we are holding a public hearing tonight on the rezoning, this portion right now is just public comments for any other items, once we open the public hearing for the agenda item, everyone will have a chance to speak on that specifically, just wanted to try and make that more clear to everybody.
Well, I get it, but you said we could talk on anything, so, right?
Right, but, but when we-
I got you.
When we open the public hearing, we're not going to come back up and repeat everything
again, so. Well, I'm up here now, so.
If you want to hold off, you can.
Can you hear me out now, since I'm here?
I'm sorry, you, you can do it.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just gonna comment on, when I moved here in two thousand and four, and then the golf course closed, we had a hearing here, and, and we were able to nix building on that at all, we proved that it would be too much hardscape and not enough landscape for water, and it, and it's come to fruition, I, I've never seen it flood like it's been flooding, my backyard floods all the way up to my pool, all the way to my neighbor's back doors, and, and never did that before, and it's, it's proven that all the building all around it, the subdivision that they just built down the street, there's more water now, the, the Salt River can't hold it, I don't know what you guys are thinking, but somebody has to do some studies there before they let them build anymore, and then other comments, it's just overbuilding completely on Twenty-three Mile Road, now they're putting a car wash up two hundred feet from Mr. C's car wash, what, what kind of, what kind of plan is that, city plan, how do you build a car wash, two, there's, Mr. C's is really gonna build another car wash right next to it, and then you got two other car washes right down the street, Chick-fil-A, I mean, you're just overbuilding Chesterfield, especially Twenty-three Mile, it's turning, it used to be nice living out here, it's not nice anymore, I have, I, I have the biggest house here, on, on, on the, uh, on the river there, I know I do, and it's, you know, I put a lot of money in that house, and it's half its value, I mean, it's just, you know, it's not good, you're not, it's, it's not helping the constituents here, doing all this building, I don't know what the tax revenue is and how it offsets, which I doubt it does, I mean, where's our sidewalks, where's our bike paths, what are we getting? You know, you got all these businesses coming in, they're dumping money in here, they want to build these fast subdivisions that are garbage, if you ask me, they're all wood, there's no brick, I mean, nothing like what's around them, it's just, I don't know, not satisfied, that's all I got to say, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
How's it going, Brian Jacobs, Baker Road resident, I'll keep my comments to not the rezoning, which I have many, Baker Road and Washington, that intersection is atrocious, it takes ten to fifteen minutes to try and go northwest on Washington, there's no light, multiple, multiple near misses and accidents, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I've witnessed at least one accident with two cars pulled off to the side of the road, I, I'd be interested to have the township do a study on that intersection. Next is sidewalks, as he just mentioned, I live on Baker Road, my kids go to Great Oaks, they want to ride their bike to school, there is no way to ride their bike other than on the roadside from Baker North and then west on Twenty-four Mile Road, there's no sidewalks, I've seen the news, uh, the articles about sidewalks being done on Twenty-three Mile Road where there's beaten paths, to me, that's not really a concern, peo- people walk along the road and they're ten feet off the road, that's fine, there is no way to, to take a kid to school who zoned for Great Oaks on a sidewalk on Baker and Twenty-four, so if that could be considered in the future, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. If I could ask, ask the audience that, I'm, I'm sure, you know, you want to applaud everybody that comes up, but if you could just hold off on any applause, I'd really appreciate it, just because there's so many people here, that if we don't have some kind of, uh, flow of the meeting, we'll be here forever, and you won't want to be here forever, we're here till we're done, so, yeah, with that, thank you, anybody else would like to come up? If not, uh, you, you can come up during the public hearings. Anyone else? With that, I will, um, bring it back up to the, uh, to the board, so we do have, um, a public hearing tonight, that's next on the agenda, and I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Kathy Bosberg, to open the public hearing for rezoning number three seven four, uh, Rick, would you like to?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, um, I need to take a vote, um-
To make a motion.
To make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is open, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, item A in the, for the public hearing this evening is number three seventy-four, requesting to rezone one hundred and fourteen point one-two acres of property located on the north side of Twenty-three Mile Road, west of Baker Road, from R-one A residential one family to R-one B residential one family, and from C-three, general commercial to RM-one residential multifamily, the parcel ID is one five dash zero nine dash one four dash one zero zero dash zero two five, and the address of the property is three three six, three three, Twenty-three Mile Road, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, with that, Ms. Osborne would like to, uh, say something?
Yes, thank you, um, sorry, I meant to get my mic going, uh, so tonight, in front of you, we have a rezoning, um, the subject site, as Mr. LaBelle mentioned, is zoned R-one A, uh, uh, with the portion at the south, excuse me, R-one A, um, at the north end, with a portion at the south end, that's C-three, um, the applicant is seeking rezoning of both of these portions of the site, the northern part, um, the R-one A portion, is , uh, being requested to be rezoned to R-one A, which is also single family, and the proposal in front of you, um, which, rezonings don't always come with a site plan, uh, the applicant has provided, um, excuse me, a concept plan, um, showing what they would like to develop on the site as part of the conditional rezoning that's, um, being proposed, um, and with that comes, um, the development of one hundred and forty-seven detached single-family lots, I'll note that currently, um, that portion of the site is zoned residential and can have, uh, single-family houses on it, um, as a condition of the rezoning, the applicant agrees to provide a larger minimum lot size of ten thousand four hundred square feet, um, which is larger than what's required for the R-one B district, but smaller than what's required for the R-one A district, um, the second part of their request is to rezone the portion of the site at the, um, south end, um, that is currently C-three to RM-one multiple-family residential, um, that would allow them to develop forty-eight condominium dwelling units, um, which would be, uh, twelve fourplex buildings, um, and as I mentioned, the applicant's requesting all of this as part of a conditional rezoning, and is offering the conditions of limiting the use of the property to the housing types, densities, and lot sizes proposed in this application, so often we'll get a rezoning, um, and they are just looking to rezone the district and not necessarily tied to a specific use, um, this applicant has said, I would like to rezone with the purpose of these specific uses, um, in this area. Uh, as mentioned, the site totals one hundred and fourteen acres, um, and again, it's located north of Twenty-three Mile and west of Baker Road, access to the site is from Twenty-three Mile Road, and as many of you probably know, the site used to be the Salt River Golf Course, and it's currently vacant, um, surrounding the property on most sides are residences, um, a mix of single-family as well as two-family and, um, condominiums and senior living facilities, um, which are located on the southern portion, and then there is, um, some other commercial uses, uh, on the southeast, uh, side of the site. Uh, the, the middle of page three in my review letter gets into the, um, items to consider for a zoning map amendment or a rezoning, um, so there's ten questions to consider, and so I'll walk you through each of those, um, the first question is whether or not the proposed rezoning is consistent with the master plan, so the master plan, um, currently designates the site as, uh, public and semi-public, um, which is probably because the site used to be a, a golf course, um, and this does not necessarily correspond with what's being proposed, um, for the rezoning, um, however, the, um, the future land, while the future land use map does show, um, that this is been, has been designated as public and semi-public, the, um, area surrounding the site is mostly planned for medium-density, single-family residential, and the southwest corner is planned for multifamily density, with the north and south ends continuing public and semi-public designations. The residential density plan identifies the dwelling units per acre for the site as one point four to two and a half dwelling units per acre, if the public or semi-public use is no longer viable, and if the township determines that a residential use is appropriate, so the master plan does call out that there is a potential that this site would not actually, um, be available for a public or semi-public use, and in that instance, um, the best, the next best vision the, the township had at that time, uh, was for residential use, um, so the applicant's proposed use of single and multifamily, um, do, uh, does give us a density of one point seven one units per acre, which does fit, um, actually at the lower end of what the master plan identified for the density for the site. Um, north and west of the site is planned to have, um, similar densities, one point four to two and a half dwelling units per acre, um, and then the parcel located to the southwest of the site, um, is planned to have densities that are even higher at two to five dwelling units per acre, um, and that's, uh, similar with the site across, um, excuse me, to the east, across Baker Road, that is also planned to have a higher density than what is, um, being proposed here. Uh, I'll also note that the master plan called out the Salt River as a special focus area, um, this parcel was cited as an example of an excellent opportunity to achieve the goals of this master plan and set a precedent in Chesterfield Township by implementing thoughtful sustainable and development, excuse me, thoughtful, sustainable development practices, um, so the focus area also emphasizes the need to carefully design and plan development on the land adjacent to the river to protect the river and flood plain, and, um, one suggestion to do this was cluster housing. Um, item number two, uh, on the bottom of page four discusses, um, what impact the rezoning would have on public services, utilities, and natural features, um, as you can see from the map there, the site does contain, um, part of the Salt River, um, and so the site does have, um, surface water, wetlands, uh, flood hazard zones, regulated floodways, and hydroic soil, soils, um, but the site also does have existing municipal water and sewer, uh, capacity and, um, access. At the top of page three, um, we move into talking about whether or not the applicant has provided evidence that the property cannot be developed or used as it is currently zoned, um, while we have not received that information from the applicant, um, their reasoning for rezoning the property is that the property would be too large, um, for one type of use, and that the, the proposed rezoning, zoning districts would allow for uses that are more marketable, economically feasible, attainable, and in demand than its existing uses, um, and then the applicant cited the need for additional affordable housing, which, um, was noted in the master plan as well. Item four discusses the proposed, uh, discusses whether or not the proposed zoning district is compatible with the surrounding uses, um, as noted previously, a lot of the surrounding area is residential, um, to varying degrees of density, um, whether it's planned or built out yet, um, but typical, or most of the area around the site is, um, is residential in some form. The middle of page five gets into, um, question five about burdens on thoroughfares, and, um, the, the burden on Twenty-three Mile Road is not likely to be greater, um, with this rezoning, um, compared to its current designation, uh, but the full traffic study would be needed to determine the impact of the change, um, the, the parcel is currently zoned C-three and R-one A, so again, um, the move from R-one A to R-one B, uh, results in a fairly minimal, uh, change in density, um, from what could be built there currently, and the change from, um, C-three to RM-one, um, we know commercial developments tend to have more intense traffic than residential, um, additionally, Twenty-three Mile Road is classified as a minor arterial road, and is planned to have a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way. Uh, the sixth criteria or consideration is whether or not, um, there's other land currently available for this use, um, in short, there are some vacant R-one B parcels and some RM-one parcels, but, um, they're kind of few and far between. Um, item seven at the bottom of page five discusses if the, uh, site would be able to meet the zoning districts if it were to be developed, um, and, uh, we do have a concept plan, so we were able to take a little bit closer look at that, um, and, under the R-one B development standards, the larger portion to the north appears to meet most of the dimensional standards, um, with its proposed typical lot detail that was provided, um, the lots do have enough room for the minimum square footage for the housing that's required, and is still able to meet the lot coverage requirements, impervious surface, surface coverage requirements, um, but those will be confirmed, uh, when we receive building plans. The, uh, smaller parcel to the south appears to be able to meet the RM-one district standards, um, but will need to modify the plan to provide a thirty-foot setback while still meeting the, um, forty-foot required rear setback. At the top of page eight, asks if a rezoning is the best way to, um, address this request, and in general, we think a rezoning would be better than amending your ordinance for the uses, um, to change the uses that are allowed in the R-one A and the C-three districts, um, there hasn't been any development on the proposed site since the master plan was adopted, so there's no changes there, and the last, um, item for Planning Commission consideration is whether or not this would be considered a spot zoning, and so there's three criteria the Planning Commission should, um, think about when they're thinking about whether or not this is a, uh, spot zone, so the first would be whether or not the rezoning request is consistent with the master plan for the area, um, I think I discussed that pretty thoroughly earlier, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them about that, that criteria, the second is, um, whether or not the proposed zoning district is a logical extension of the existing zoning in the area, um, so if rezoned, the request would extend the existing R-one B that's located to the northwest of the site to the south and the east, um, however, there's no RM-one that's adjacent to the site, um, but there is one parcel located along Twenty-four Mile Road that is RM-one, um, but we will, I will again, um, note that a lot of the, um, surrounding parcels are similarly zoned and, um, used in terms of their residential uses, and then the final criteria is whether or not the, um, granting the request would provide a special benefit to the property owner or developer, and that's, um, for the Planning Commission to consider, uh, so with that, I think that completes my- Uh, so with that, I think that completes my review. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. You can't, you can't just yell out, uh, from the back. If you want, you can come up to the podium when we open it to the public. Thank you. Um, is the applicant, uh, I'm sure the applicant is here, would you like to come up and say a few things?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Tom Callis, members of the Planning Commission. Nice to be here in front of you. My address is three one three five zero Telegraph Road, Suite two zero one, and that's in Bingham Farms, Michigan. Uh, as the planning consultant indicated, we are here seeking rezoning of the property from current R one A to R one B and from C three to RM one. Now, the planning consultant did prepare a report, uh, went through it. It's very concise, very succinct, and we fit the criteria for the rezoning. We fit the criteria for the master plan for the proposed residential density in that area, which in the master plan indicates one point four to two point five units per acre. We're coming in at one point seven units per acre. Now, what's important to realize is we're coming in under conditional rezoning, which is allowed under the law, and the reason why we decided to do that is to give you, the township and planning commission, and the residents surrounding, a comfort level. And by rezoning to R one B or, and, and, uh, RM one, the people that surround the area, and we know there's concerns with flooding, and we'll address those and, and, and other concerns, they know exactly what will be developed there if, in fact, the rezoning is approved. So, sometimes on rezoning, if it's a straight rezoning, and you come in and ask for a specific zoning district and it's approved, even though I say I'll do a certain use, I can actually do any use allowed under that zoning district. So by coming in under the conditional zoning, we are bound by what we have proposed if the rezoning is approved. And what their proposal is, as indicated in the planning review, Jonathan, can you put the colored site plan up there, uh, if possible? Just to get a visual of the concept plan, and again, just so everyone is aware, if the rezoning is approved, the applicant and owner, uh, still has to go through your regular and formal site plan approval process and engineering process. In addition to that, it's under the jurisdiction of the township, the Macomb County Public Works Office, Macomb County Department of Roads, uh, the State of Michigan, and Eagle, uh, for wetlands. So, we would have to meet all the criteria of those agencies, go through site plan approval, meet the criteria of your ordinance, go through engineering, and meet all your engineering criteria and land development criteria, and in that process is when we address, and we'll mention it here this evening also, in that process is when all the issues relative to flooding will be addressed. Now, I know the residents may not agree with me, but actually by developing the site and engineering it, it's going to alleviate the flooding that's currently taking place on the property. The property right now is vacant land. It shut down, it was the old Salt River Golf Course, it closed in two thousand fourteen for economic reasons. Actually, by way of history, I've been involved with this site. In two thousand six, we came in seeking a rezoning for two hundred thirty-one sixty-five foot wide lots. That was, we had a builder at the time, Centex, which was a national builder, who was ready to develop the site and build the houses. As you know, in two thousand eight, the real estate market collapsed, Centex actually left the state, and that project went by the wayside. I was also involved in two thousand sixteen when we came in for a P U D for this site, which was approved but has since expired. Uh, and the P U D is exactly what we're asking, the, the sized lots, they were eighty by one thirties, and that's what we're proposing here this evening. Uh, the P U D actually had a hundred and sixty-three single-family sites, we're proposing a hundred forty-seven single-family sites. Now, we also have, uh, dupe, or a fourplex condominium units, and that's actually downzoning the C three commercial to a, your lowest-density residential multifamily. So it's actually a benefit, it's a less intense use, it's not unsightly, it's not a retail center. If you look at other uses in C three, you can do car washes, fast food, drive-throughs, um, special land uses allow things like pawn shops, uh, service stations, gasoline stations, uh, you know, unsightly things like, or, you know, uses like adult bookstores, adult movie theaters, so that's all goes away, that all goes away. If the rezoning is approved, you know what you're getting, you're gonna get forty-eight nice condo units there in twelve fourplex buildings. This is going to be the new development in the township that's going to be premier development. The, the site is beautiful, it's a rolling site, it has a salt river mandering through it. As you can see on the plan, part of our, uh, stormwater maintenance system, we have seven detention ponds proposed for the site. These ponds are gonna have aerators, they're gonna be beautiful, very nice to look at, you're gonna have residential houses, these lots are gonna be premium lots, looking at detention areas, open space. Uh, in this development, we actually, uh, have seventy-five, close to seventy-five percent overall open space. Seventy-five percent, that's unheard of. Only twenty-five percent of the land is actually covered with housing. Twenty, seventy-five percent is open space, which is inclusive of the river, the detention areas, the open space, as you can see on the plan there. We have proposed bike paths, walking paths, we have a kayak canoe launching area, i- if, if people want, residents in the subdivision might use it for that. We have, as you can see from the site plan, you know, very, a lot of greenbelt. On the east and west side, which I know a lot of the residents here this evening, uh, probably reside in those houses, the P U D actually was a thirty-foot buffer on the east and west side. My client is conscious of all the concerns of the residents, conscientious, is proposing a fifty-foot buffer, so there's gonna be a fifty-foot buffer on the east and west side of our property, and as you can see, on the northeast side of the development, it's all open space and, and detention pond area anyway, so. Okay, um, I, I understand people are talking, and, and of course, we'll be here to answer questions.
Excuse me. Could you please ju- let him do his talking, and you'll have your opportunity to come up and, and, uh, ask questions and talk about it. Thank you.
So again, and it's, it's important to realize, as previously mentioned, this property is already zoned for single-family lots, for ninety by one fifties. We're simply coming in and asking for eighty by one thirties. Why are we asking for eighty by one thirties? Because we'd like to leave more open space. We're on the lower end of the density that's planned for this area. These lots are gonna be much more marketable, you're gonna have beautiful homes on these lots, walkout basements, probably forty-five to fifty of the lots will allow for walkout basements, you're gonna, some will allow for side-entry garages, uh, they'll all have attached two to three-car garages, uh, basements, uh, you know, it's, it's just gonna be a premier development here in the township, and by having mixed residential, you're not focusing on just one segment of the market. Today, consumer demands have changed. Materials have gone through the roof, interest rates are high, it's very costly to build a house, very costly to build a condominium. Consumers don't want large lots. I, I rezoned properties all over the area, they don't want large lots. We've actually had rezonings in other communities where sixty-foot lots are now starting to be the norm, uh, and, and we looked at that for this property, but we didn't do that. We wanted to come in with a nice development, a nice development with nice-sized lots, which are actually lower than your R one A, but larger than your R one B. Um, these are, eighty-foot lots are, are, are good-sized lots, and the du- the condos, we're actually downzoning a commercial area that can be very unsightly, very intense traffic-wise, and the benefit of the condos is you typically cater to empty nesters, retirees, newly-married couples, so you don't have the traffic coming in and out like you would for a retail center, a shopping center. Typically, people, you know, have less cars, they're retirees, empty nesters, snowbirds, you know, they live there part-time, and even if they live there year, year-round, they have one car, they come in and out at off-peak hours, they don't have to go to work, they're retired. So this, you know, a lot of thought was put into this project, a lot of thought, time and effort and expense, you know, we, we've got engineers involved, we have wetland consultants, we've been dealing with the, the state, we've been dealing with the county already, so we're, we're doing our homework, and we're coming in, you know, if the rezoning is approved, you know, we'll be ready to go. Uh, the applicant, Mr. Jarvis, who's here, longtime business owner, resident of the township, uh, he is very excited about this project, as, as are we. He has the ability to develop it, he has the wherewithal to develop it, and he's very excited about what he will be able to put there, as you can see a slight, you know, slight glimpse by looking at the, uh, the concept plan, and it's only gonna get better as we go through site plan, engineering, and the permitting process. So, we meet the criteria and the designation in your master plan, the zoning is appropriate, there are other similar and exact uses around us, both condominiums, you have R one B, you have R one A, and the site is ready to be developed. It's been sitting vacant, it'll continue to be vacant, okay, unless developed for what we're proposing, there's just no market for ninety-foot lots. Um, and there's a lot of commercial, as indicated, up and down, uh, twenty-three mile, we're taking that out of the mix, we're gonna give you, uh, condominiums. So with that being said, uh, we're here to answer any questions. Uh, I appreciate your, your time, and, uh, hopefully we'll get a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
I had one question for you, you've mentioned Centex.
Yes.
Back in two thousand six, how many sites, how many lots were approved back then?
We actually went into litigation, and we were in the process of doing a consent judgment that allowed for two hundred and thirty-one sixty-five foot wide lots.
Thank you.
And then again, the P U D was a hundred sixty-three, that was approved, you know. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Like to open it up to the audience. Um, if anybody would like to come up and, and say anything about, uh, this, uh, agenda item, uh, feel free to come on up. If you've come up already, we don't wanna have repeats on what was already said, so anything new, we'd love to hear it. Please sign in, and, uh, got a three-minute time limit, and we can't answer any questions, so we're glad to hear your concerns and comments.
Good evening, members of the board, neighbors, and fellow residents. My name is Cynthia Williams-Sandevall. I live directly adjacent to the golf course property that's now being considered for the rezoning to smaller lots and multifamily residential. I'm here today not just behalf on my household, but on behalf of the many in the community who are deeply concerned about the future of this land and the precedent we are setting. Let's be clear, this proposed rezoning and the development of over two hundred homes is not in the best interest of Chesterfield Township or its residents. Let's talk about the land. Salt River runs through this golf course and the only, and is a designated floodplain. Increasing development in a floodplain is not, is short-sighted. It's dangerous and impervious surfaces like driveways, rooftops, and roads will only worsen the runoff, increasing flooding risk and putting new and existing homes in harm's way. We've seen the consequences of unchecked development in other communities. Let's not repeat those mistakes here. Second, Chesterfield is already feeling the growing pains of expansion. Adding over two hundred housing units will have a significant and immediate impact on our already burdened roads, schools, and infrastructure. Traffic congestion, which is already terrible on twenty-three mile, will increase dramatically, and emergency services will be stretched thinner, ultimately diminishing the quality of life we all moved here for. And lastly, our community needs more green space, not less. The former township supervisor had a vision for this land that made sense, which is why it still cla- was classified as public. It was a public area with walking paths, jogging trails, dog park, canoe access, and preserved natural beauty. I saw it in his office, it was behind his desk when he was in, in here as township supervisor. That's the kind of community-centered planning that increases property values and strengthens public health and builds pride among residents. We are not anti-development, we are pro-responsible planning. Rezoning this land for multifamily housing and high-density development will forever alter the characteristic of our township. Once our green space is gone, it's gone for good. Instead of sacrificing a rare and valuable natural resource, let's preserve it. It's cheap, I don't know why township didn't buy it. Let's make it a community park, let's give it to our children and future generations, a space to explore, play, and grow. In closing, I respectfully but firmly urge you to not approve this rezoning. Turn it into a park that will benefit every single resident in this community in Chesterfield and not just benefit the developers. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, planning commission, and fellow residents. My name is Jeannie Amici, I'm a proud residence of, resident of Chesterfield Township. I've lived adjacent to the former Salt River Golf Course since nineteen ninety-four, and I'm here tonight to respectfully urge you to vote no on the proposed rezoning of this property to multifamily residential. As the turnout tonight clearly shows, this community stands united in opposition to this rezoning. The issue is far more than rezoning, it's about protecting the integrity, safety, and character of our township. The Salt River Golf Course has long been a peaceful, green space, a natural buffer that supports wildlife, reduces flood, flooding risk, and offers environmental balance in a rapidly developing area. With the Salt River running directly through the property, increasing impervious, impervious surfaces like pavements and buildings could raise the risk of flooding, disrupt drainage patterns, and damage the surrounding river ecosystem. That's why I'm calling for a comprehensive hydrological and environmental impact study before any further commi- consideration of rezoning is allowed. The neighborhoods that surround this land are all low-density residential. A high-density multifamily development would fundamentally change the character of our community and potentially decrease nearby home values. This isn't progress, it's disruption. What's more, the existing infrastructure simply cannot support the density this proposal would introduce. Our water sewer and road systems were never designed for that level of use. The development would rely on a single entrance and exit point, although in there it potentially looks like there's a second, which would be interesting to understand, further exacerb- exacerbating already dangerous congestion on twenty-three mile road. That's not just inconvenient, it's a safety hazard. Let me be clear, the residents of Chesterfield are organizing, we are mobilized, we are deeply concerned about the long-term consequences of this rezoning. Our message is simple, the proposal does not serve the public interest. It will increase traffic, strain infrastructure, and compromise safety, and diminish the quality of life that drew so many of us to this township, in particular, the area surrounding the for- former Salt River Golf Course. This is not the voice of a small minority, this is a growing coalition of residents who care deeply about responsible development and environmental stewardship. We are not anti-growth, we are pro-community. We develop, we welcome development that aligns with the values, needs, and vision of Chesterfield's future. This proposal does not. So tonight, I respectfully ask the board to stand with your constituents, to listen to the people who were, who elected you to, who elected you to represent us, to protect the unique character and livability of our township. Vote no on the rezoning of the Salt River Golf Course, let's work together to find a thoughtful, balanced solution that supports progress without sa- sacrificing the community that we love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a neighbor directly to the west of this development, we're in Salt River Condos. Uh, the concerns that everybody's expressed here, I, I would echo, and I don't need to say them again, this is being rezoned to multifamily in the front because it's a substandard commercial piece of property, and that's a pretty high-density. We have a hundred and ninety-five units that are being proposed here, and to think that that's not going to negatively impact the roadway, and the, it's not an age-restricted community, it is a standard community, those are single-family homes, there's a hundred and forty-seven single-family homes, that's two kids and a dog and the big garage that he described. The traffic in and out of this at rush hour, I can't even imagine getting out of that neighborhood on twenty-three mile without a signal, and all of the concerns of flooding are very real, and I, there's already been negative impacts to those wetlands, all of those trees have already come down, we see it from our window every day. So, we're asking for you to be good stewards of this property. You know, minimally, it should be single-family at, at the original, which is the low-density zoning seems to make more sense, and it just, to me, crazy to put almost two hundred units that are going in and out of one driveway, even from a life-safety perspective, how can first responders get, uh, that last house? Even from a life-safety perspective, how can first responders get that last house on the end there and get out and then coming and going to and from work every day? That's 195, two cars, double that, trying to get in and out of work every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Zelkey, I live at 33900 24 Mile. I've got the river that runs right through my property. Right now, I've got all kinds of trees laying there from the other subdivision they built on the other side of Washington, and I'm trying to get it out. I've got, it's terrible, that river comes up 20-foot. It's not, it's not right. It's, should have some kind of help here. This is retention ponds, you've only got small ponds up there. I mean, we need something big if you're going to put a subdivision in there. This is crazy. I've never seen anything like this in my life. So, alrighty.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's William Wiseman, I live on Laurel Oak Lane. I don't really have a statement, but I do have a couple of questions. When you originally were starting your motions about how this all comes about and some of their needs and regulations and stuff like that, if I go to the DMV and I don't have all my paperwork, if I come to you with a permit and I don't have all the paperwork, you send me back until I get it. I thought, unless I heard wrong, you said that they did not provide a document about why the current zoning cannot be used? So, why is this meeting even being held? And also, if it's voted down, what confidence do we have that it'll stay or it'll just become another car wash and you just keep voting on it until somebody says yes? I mean, those are two questions I have, and I'd like to have them answered, please. Well, she, lady sitting to your left, in her opening statements, said that she's gone through requirements of what the meeting needed for it to be held. And one of the requirements was that it had to have a reason why it was not able to be used for the current zoning. They did not provide that yet, so why is this meeting even being held?
We'll address that tonight.
Yeah, I'd like that answered, please. Why, if it's voted down, I want confidence that it won't be voted on again, just like the car wash, and you're putting another one out of business.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Elaine Lucas. I live at 522-54 Laurel Oak. I was the third house on the golf course, and I've seen a lot of change. I wonder, and I think a lot of people out here are wondering, how many of you have actually walked the golf course? Anybody? Anybody? Nobody? I'm going to submit to you right now a binder that I've kept from day one with all the pictures that we could take of all the flooding that everybody's talking about. I'm talking about wildlife. We had three eagles, and the next day, those trees were taken down. These are things that you, these are things that you don't see.
Excuse me a minute, Mr. Chair, it's very difficult to hear over here when the audience is making comments.
We're going to ask you to please refrain from yelling out, please.
Okay, I'll tell you what he said. He said they were nesting, and those trees were taken down, okay? I have pictures in here. Please, just take a few minutes and appease us by looking through the binder. It goes all the way back to day one with every meeting that you've held and you've managed to do what we're asking you to do.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Hi, Dave Guyer, 34274 Gillies, I'm on the other side of Baker Road. Regarding the development, was it COMTEX? Is that correct? That came in, what was it, 2006, 2004? I just went back and looked through some of the articles, they were talking about, hey, this is the reason that this was declined, we're not going to rezone, we're not going to do this. One of them was a Indian burial ground, so that was never supposed to be built on, according to the township. I don't know if anybody knows about that, it was around hole six in the golf course. That was, that was told to the folks that were at the meeting that, no, this will never be built on, there will be structure, will be built on that. The other one was, we were told that ingress and egress was an issue, and that was a huge issue, and they were talking to people on 24 Mile to try and get some right-of-way so they can get some egress. And now I see that it's off of Baker, there's a little road that goes off of Baker, is that the egress between two houses? There's, it sure looks like it. Is that a driveway? Okay, so we're not sure, we just have one ingress, we don't have egress. Is that correct? Okay, just curious.
Yeah, we're not going to go back and forth with a bunch of questions right now, but we're all taking in everything that you're, we're listening to everything being said.
Gotcha. I just wanted to note those two things were told to us way back when, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mark Hodam. I live at 51581 Baker, about 250 yards down from the first tee box, if you remember, it's a golf course. I've lived there since 1993, when I built my house. The issues that we have had, and this has gone back to previous planning commissions, are, we don't want it to be built like Wolverine. Wolverine got approved, they started building houses, they built three houses, four houses, and then all of a sudden, everything stopped. And the fields grew, and nobody took care of any of it, because in this, in this development, you're going to be able to build maybe 20 houses, and then you're going to have to put a bridge in. And that bridge is not going to be cheap. And, you know, I think initially what they need to be able to do is have the money for the bridge and escrow before they even can start to build. I understand this is the planning commission. You guys have a whole list of things that you have to follow, and does it meet this, 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 and this? And if it meets those planning criteria, you have to approve it. And then it goes off to engineering, it goes off to Eagle, and it goes off to all these other agencies. I just think you should nip it in the bud to start with, but that's my opinion. Again, the egress, ingress, we've had that issue, that's going to continue to be an issue. The idea of smaller houses, and having higher density, I don't think that's going to be, I don't think that's, I think that's going to be an issue. Putting basements in, you're not going to be able to put basements in on this golf course. If you're going to have a walkout, you're going to have a flood, and you're going to have an indoor pool, not, let alone having an outdoor pool. I've got thousands of pictures of the immense flooding that happens on that course, and some of where those lots are, are in floodplains. And when you approved it for 163 houses in 2006, 2016, some of those houses were in the floodplain as well. It's not the Army Corps of Engineer floodplain, it's the floodplain that happens with the river. It's not the one-in-10-year flood, because this river floods two to three times every five years, and floods drastically. And I just think that overall, you're better off with the way it was originally discussed in turning it into a public space and putting it as a park. I understand right now it's zoned as R1A. There's nothing we can do about that. You can do something about it, but we can't. And as for putting condominiums in the front, you have condominiums on the other side of the street, and you've got condominiums a little bit to the west. I think, I think we're condominiumed out on 23 Mile Road.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
My name is Mary Hiller. I live on Baker Road. I'm one of those two houses that has that easement between them. And not only am I concerned about everything else that all of my neighbors are concerned about, but if you think I want that traffic from all of those homes driving next to my house constantly, you are mistaken. And no one here would tolerate that as well. So, I ask that you at least consider that and that you rezone this, not the way it's been proposed, but as a park area for the community.
Thank you.
Just to highlight a few things, I have a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering as well as a master's degree. The issue with the Salt River starts upstream. The mass flow rate does not change. When you start excavating all of these walkout basements and that land gets pushed towards the river, you're taking away the width that the river can flood, so, since the mass flow rate isn't changing, the height is going to rise. I think the gentleman who lives on the corner, the top-left corner, I can see his house from my backyard, and it is Whitewater Rapids for two days straight. The FEMA flood map that is available to everybody shows a 0.2% floodplain that is at least 40 feet off three times a year. It pulls so far into my backyard that it's up to my pool, which I have, I think, 60 to 70 feet between my pool and my property line. Additionally, people have already mentioned the means of ingress and egress. I see high-value homes with walkout basements where you have to drive through an apartment complex to get to it. I don't believe that any of those homes would benefit the value of my house. Furthermore, I am a Baker Road resident. All of those houses on the south end of Baker Road that will have apartments in their backyard, those will be devalued, and I would then be comping with them. My value's not going to go up, it's going to go down. My taxes are definitely not going to go down. I was overtaxed to begin with when I built my property three years ago. One of the ladies mentioned the eagles. Yes, I haven't seen them since the cutting has started. Cooper's hawks, red-tailed hawks, I haven't seen, used to see five or six a day, I've seen one in maybe two weeks. The ponds, those two ponds in the top-left corner, they already exist, and they don't go anywhere. The mosquitoes from it, it's really not great. To add another large standing water pond is just going to, it's not going to be as pleasant of an area as it is now, especially with the rest. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Allison Leach, and I'm at 52070 Laurel Oak Lane. And again, I echo a lot of the concerns that the residents have brought forward. A couple of things that I just wanted to reinforce, the traffic, between Foster and 94 today, there's a 10-minute traffic jam at any time in the evening to try to even get out of Chesterfield. I feel like there have been multiple subdivisions put in Chesterfield over the last few years. I have eight written down, like just of note, from Sugar Bush to Baker, Washington, to all these little natural areas that they're buying up and cramming as many homes into as possible, such as the park where the water tower is, all of that natural landscape got removed and houses put in. Also, our schools are busting at the seams. My son just graduated last week with 460 kids in his class. I can't imagine what more families are going to do to the school system, and I know that we're reconfiguring schools for next year and whatnot, but I just wonder what all of those other homes are going to bring to our school systems. As far as the condo comment that the gentleman made about assuming that they're retirees and snowbirds, you can't make that assumption for people who live in condos. And I believe that there's full families that will also come to occupy the condos as well as the houses that are going to be proposed to be built. The wildlife, I have PTSD from hearing those chainsaws at night, I'm not going to lie, and watching them cheer as all the trees fell down, like, literally brought me to tears. So, I'd really love you to consider the beauty that's left there at this moment and oppose the rezoning and the development of that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carl Emmerich. I live on 33830 24 Mile Road. I have a little over 13 acres on 24 Mile Road, and I've been there since 1984, so I got a little bit of street cred in terms of what happens with the Salt River. Been there over 40 years. The topographical maps of the floodplain and the floodway are very inaccurate, and any preliminary consideration for any rezoning without engineering and site plan is a mistake on your part, I feel. The floodplain, they've got the street in the floodplain. A couple hundred feet of the street in the floodplain. Now, do you want to be trapped in your house for two, three days because you can't get out? I mean, really, this is somewhat of a travesty. I'd encourage anybody to show up at the township office and get this like I did, and it has complete development maps, whatever, and look at it. You know, this floodplain area is a lot different than it was when it was Dolly Lewis's farm in 1830, and I'm disappointed that none of you have walked this property. It's a real shame that you can be on our board and represent us without walking. This, the whole area was changed in the 60s when it was redesigned as a golf course, but the river's going to reclaim it, the river's going to do what the river wants to do. And the only motion I would suggest tonight, well, one thing I want to clarify, this young lady, I'm sorry, Ms. Orbison or Osborne, but you stated that the majority of the structures are not surrounding it, the golf courses are not R1A, I think that's inaccurate, and I think that should be reflected in the minutes, that the majority of the property around the golf course is R1A and not R1B or some other lower designation. So, I would strongly consider you table this until you get some serious engineering studies, because this doesn't make any sense based on what the Salt River actually does.
Thank you.
Hi, board, thanks for having us here. My name's Alan Leach. My wife just spoke a few minutes ago. We find this very important. Tonight's our 19th wedding anniversary, and we decided to be here. So, that being said, what we're asking of you is care and concern and having some responsibility for your constituents. We have watched the course be taken down in a terrible, ugly fashion over the last six months. There is not responsibility, care, and concern on the property owner currently. You have, I don't know, 200 homes, 200 people here right now that are deeply concerned, not about their property values, but about the community. And we're asking you to have our backs. That's what we need. Not somebody that's out to make a profit, and that's his right, but not at our expense, not at the expense of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tim Vervek. I live at 51747 Baker Road. I've been living on Baker Roads for over 30-plus years. I've put together a report here for you that I will provide you copies of, that basically identifies seven technical issues that are wrong with this property that have to be addressed during engineering. Now, I know this is the phase where you've got a rezoning that happens, and you'll have a site plan review, and then you're going to get into engineering, and I get it, but these issues must be addressed, okay? And one of them is the flooding issue, and I'll tell you why. I'm not just going to tell you it floods, I'm going to tell you why it's flooding. You've got vehicle circulation and landscaping that has to happen, egress in and out. You've got topographical issues and fill requirements that are needed. There's over a 20-foot drop from my brick ledge on my house out to where the first green- There's over a twenty-foot drop from my brick ledge on my house out to where the first, um, green is at, okay? That's going to have to have engineered fill put in it. There's sanitary infrastructure issues because the elevations on the property are so severe that you're, you're probably going to need pump houses out there. How many? I don't know. That'll be figured out during engineering. You've got traffic, traffic and safety issues because the, the entrance and exits here cannot support any type of egress, uh, any deceleration or acceleration lanes. You've got increased hardscape that's now going to happen. There's eight subdivisions that surround the Salt River here. Not one of them has a detention pond on them. What was the detention pond? That river and that golf course. All of that hardscape on all of those properties, all floods into the storm drain. The storm drains all go into the Salt River and that's why we have the escalation in height when, when you get significant rainfall. It became worse this year when the subdivision at the end of Baker and Washington, at that intersection, was put in because that all drains into Salt River also. The reason I know that? Because I'm right towards the end of the curve on Baker Road. My pump, my sump pump is going off about, when it rains hard, it's going off about every ten minutes. That sump pump this spring was going out my overflow. Now, why would it be going out my overflow for the first time in thirty years? Because the river was over the top of the outlet to this, to the storm drain. And I've seen that happen because I've noticed the manhole cover across the street that also empties into there. And the water is shooting out two feet in the air when we get a hard rain. So you've got those particular issues. You've got stormwater runoff in retention ponds that are actually in the floodplain area on this diagram. The existing floodplains are positioned or located about maybe ten yards off the outline of the river. And the problem with that is that it, it, they're obsolete. They're obsolete because you've got more runoff now than you've ever had before. This is a very, very serious problem. And all I ask, all I ask you to do is make sure that these seven issues are addressed because you're going to flood people out here.
I do, I do apologize, but the three minutes is up. Thank you for your comments.
I get it.
Thank you for the information. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dan Van Hecke. I live at 51564 Laurel Oak Lane, backed up to the subdivision that they're looking at putting in. My question, the main one, right now, other than, I don't know, let, let me start back when we bought our house, a year and a half ago. We did our due diligence. We went around, we talked to the neighbors, we talked to ex-city employees. And it was my understanding at that time that there was a study done by all the departments that because there was only one entrance in and one entrance out, that all these, every unit had to have a fire suppression system. I don't know if, I would assume that's true from the person I got it from. For one thing, that in order to build that second row of houses from the top, those are in the floodplain. You've got, as one gentleman said, a seventeen-foot variance from the creek up to the level they're going to build that house. Now, before they came in and wasted everybody's time here, and I mean no disrespect to Mr. Jarvis, I just would have expected that an engineering firm that would have done this would have had Eagle make their determination as to what's going to happen. I talked to a gentleman there. He told me that they invited him out to drive around the property and look at what they had, all right? Finding out in my discussion that if they're going to backfill these floodplains, now we're bringing in three more departments of the state of Michigan other than just Eagle. So, and again, as the other gentleman said, I mean, I had my map for the last, well, I got it three days after they dropped theirs off. A couple of us walked this entire area. They're building their road that goes over the creek in the floodplain, both sides. This emergency entrance from the condo complex and this two-track, those aren't roads, that's a two-track. It isn't a road. Which means if in fact there's a fire, the people at the very end have to wait until the fire truck can get in, drive through the condos, through the houses, across the creek, all the way down, bend over here to get to the end. Now, all of the talk about the floodplain.
I'm sorry, the, your three minutes is up. I'm sorry. If I, if I let everybody go longer, I can't do that.
Can I have one more minute? It's simple. I'm going to answer another man's question. The other side of 24 Mile Road, he's talking about the flooding he has. That last rain that we got in, what was it, an inch and a half, if that? All that property was flooded for almost three and a half weeks. Flooded, and he can attest to it. I'm sure he's got pictures. You guys have no idea. And if none of you have ever walked it, how can you sit here and make decisions that are going to affect everybody in this township? And that's what you're doing. Do like I did. Do like the rest of us did. Grab a map and take a walk. Hell, my next-door neighbor has a four-by-five. We'll drive you around.
I'm going to have to, thank you.
I just want to bring attention to the emergency.
Did you sign in?
Yes, I did. I first want to speak. Um, the emergency exit that they had to have when they didn't want to have to put some fire suppression systems back in two thousand sixteen. They proposed a property on 24 Mile Road and they also proposed between the two condo buildings that you see at the Salt River condos, where you see in that little road right there. They were all denied. That's why, if I'm not mistaken, that's why the whole plan was nixed back in two thousand sixteen is because they could not get a second ac- access. I'm seeing a road there between my two condo buildings. I don't know where they got that permission to buil- build that road. The flooding, I have seen literally fifty yards in front of my condo building and I'm right on the old Eleventh Green with the Salt River right alongside of me. And I can see the whole complex, the whole golf course, and the whole thing floods. Bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and say something? If anybody else wants to come up, please sign in while you're waiting and, uh... Hello.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Dubay and I have lived on this golf course my entire life. This has been an extension of my backyard from day one. My parents had me, um, this, at the house that they were in, in nineteen eighty-one. And I've spent many a years out here. In college, I did beer cart all throughout, every hole. And you want to talk about someone that's walked this course? I have taken the reliefs and the, the crayon scratchings of the Native American burial grounds. I have, I'm so sorry, I have swam under my head in the creek that's been in the fourteenth, thirteenth, twelfth, and eleventh fairway. Also, the folks that are working on the golf course right now currently, I don't know if anyone else knows.
Excuse me, can you please address?
They work the last six days of the month. That's it. It's like they have the B squad out there. So they have one guy that kind of does all the jobs. And if you haven't seen it, what they did is they came in, they leveled all the trees and just left them. And then they bring in this little Kirby cart thing that is something out of a nightmare. And then they scratch them all up and twigs are flying everywhere. I have so many sticks in my backyard that are speared in different places because of irresponsible practicing. Come on, the last five days, this type of grooming, can we at least ask for proper cleanup? We have logs that are just piled and piled that were our trees that we've looked at, that we have memories with. And how are we supposed to trust that these people are going to, to have the responsible practices if none of us have seen it yet and we have experienced it day in and day out? So I encourage you, if this meeting is tabled, please, our, one of our requests is that you all walk it with the map and engineers and see what they're trying to do. See what we see. See, see the chainsaws that my neighbor spoke of, that they're out there. They don't work before three o'clock. They come in after three o'clock. So when everybody gets home, then they're all making a ruckus. This is not what you want for the people that you want to have in your community, that are your tax-fearing citizens, that pay their taxes, that pay them on time. It's public record. You don't, you don't really want to do this to, to these people. And so I ask that you have a little bit of empathy, that you please take a little bit of your time and, and see what we all see. Anybody else want a minute?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I apologize in advance. I just wanted to stress how bad this flooding problem is. My name's Jason Teller. I live at 51665 Baker. Since the sub at Baker and Washington started last year, twice in the last, uh, two rainstorms that we had, I've had water coming right up to my house. Sump pump flowing over my out, uh, my overflow and my, uh, storm drains in the back of my house where the catch basins, three feet of water spraying out. And it's, and we're talking about the eagles. It's a shame what they did to that land. We had big, beautiful eagle nests back there and it just came through and just hacked everything down. So I just wanted to apologize in advance, but I just want you guys, before you make your decision, your existing, uh, residents that voted for you, we already have water coming up to our house. The Salt River is, is not the Clinton River. It's a little ditch. And your guys are just cramming all this water from these subs that are being built down this little ditch and it's already backing up into our homes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jeff Hayes and I just got one quick question. I wanted to know how much these houses that they're putting in here, what they're going to be going for? That's just the only question I really got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bobby Romans and I live on Baker Road, right on the corner of where Salt River is behind our house. Ever since we've been there, the flooding, it's, we're losing retention in our backyard already. Our backyard has dropped from all of the flooding that's happening. I have watched over seven car accidents happen on 23 Mile and Baker Road from just the little traffic that we have now. So if you add these houses, it's only going to congest us even more. Not alone trying to go down to ninety-four freeway to go to work in the morning, which already takes ten to fifteen minutes for all of us, for our commute. Adding these people are also going to take away our peace. We moved out here for peace of mind, not for any extra people to be behind us or the ruckus that they're putting. I feel like I live in The Lion King with Scar in my backyard. Literally. That's how bad it looks back there. It's not a proper tearing down of trees. It's not a proper cleaning up of trees. It's not proper wood chipping of trees. I mean, these people's backyard looks like crap. It's all types of wood chips in our backyard. I just, I don't agree with it. I just ask for your sympathy, empathy, please. Just go walk it, look at it, listen to us because we live here. We are here. We're talking about school districts, traffic, congestion, flooding, numerous amounts of flooding. All of that, it looked like a whole lake was across the street from me. It's all grassland right now. But when it, when it rains, it's all, it's a whole lake over there. I'm talking somebody's dog house was in their back, it was underneath the water the last time. It just doesn't make sense to, to even consider building all of these properties. If they want to build, I can see half of it, but building this much is just, it just doesn't even make sense. It does not make sense. So I just ask for you to please just consider all of us who are here today and the people who are not here today as well. Just please take it into consideration to vote no on this and please just go and walk it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sue Karine. I live at 51732 Laurel Oak Lane. I have lived there, I believe, since January of nineteen ninety-eight. I didn't have an appreciation for nature until I moved to the Salt River Golf Course area. Now, I don't know what happened to my nature. I don't see deer fighting in my backyard. I don't see the woodpeckers, three or four different varieties. I don't see, like they said, the falcons, the eagles. I don't even see possums. I don't see raccoons. I don't see skunks. I don't see anything anymore. They're all gone. They mowed down turkey eggs. They had laid eggs out there. They just mowed them right over and they're all gone, wild turkeys. And my main concern is everybody else that is about traffic. You know, I'm sixty-seven, recently retired. I'm afraid to drive on 23 Mile Road majority of the time now. I know when work traffic starts because four o'clock, the sirens start. Uh, one thing I want to say about my neighbors on Laurel Oak, we are united. And since the golf course, uh, closed, we have mowed out about fifty feet. Every single one of us that I know, on our own money, we have mowed that property, okay? And what's interesting is that, um, I, if you haven't been on it, there's two lakes that form behind my property. So apparently I should thank Mr. Jarvis for giving me the two lakes if we're going to have fifty feet of property in between us and them. But we have taken care of it because we care about it. And we care about it because a lot of us have lived there for a very, very long time. I wanted to retire there. I retired and now I don't want to live there. So this is, it's kind of really sad. I have new neighbors that are like five years. I feel sorry for them. They've moved into this and then they're right in the middle of this mess. So that's all I really have to say. Um, Nicolette is not even done. That was started. That's not done. The Redwood area, when I tried to get out of DWC and the light, I, and I know it's not even hardly occupied Redwood. I don't, it, it's going to be just a big mess. And I don't know how many accidents happen. Twenty-three Mile and DWC is just a big mess. But in any event, that's all I have to say. But remember, we care about this because we spent our time and money mowing out fifty feet. I, I'm sure every single one of us, because I could look down, I could walk there and I could look down. And we took care of that property. And that's probably why they're doing this now because they don't want to give it to us because we maintained it for so long. Mr. Jarvis, being a member of Chesterfield Township, has made a lot of money off of us through his company. He's worked at my, his company has worked at my house. And for somebody who lives in our community to do something like this to us, I, I feel really sad for him. But I feel worse for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for your comments. I'm going to bring it back to the, uh, board. And, uh, I'm going to allow the applicant to come back up and address any of the questions or whatever he'd like to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, good evening. Tom Callis, on behalf of the applicant and owner. So again, it's not to beat a dead horse, but flooding, flooding, flooding. The property is flooding. There's no stormwater maintenance system. It's vacant land. Since the golf course closed in two thousand fourteen, eleven years ago, it's been sitting there. It's subject to the elements. It's subject to rain. It's subject to contours, subject to land being rebalanced by nature itself. This development is going to allow this site to be engineered. It will alleviate flooding. Uh, it will deal with the issues that the residents have been talking about. You're going to have detention. You're going to have the river. Drains will... You're going to have detention, you're going to have the river, drains will be cleaned out per requirement of the Macomb County Public Works Office. The Salt River will be cleaned out if necessary. All of these items will be taken care of as previously indicated and they're legitimate concerns, we acknowledge them, and that's why we're here with the proposal that we have and under conditional rezoning, so everyone knows what they're getting. Now, when we go through the actual site plan and engineering process, if lots are in floodplain, we only have seven lots in floodplain, but you can build in a floodplain, you can get permits, cut and fill, you know, and if we can't, we can't, we lose seven lots. But all those issues will be dealt with under the jurisdiction of professionals, whether it's the township engineers, whether it's the Macomb County Public Works, the Macomb County Department of Roads, Eagle. So, those are the safeguards that exist that should alleviate the concerns and fears that the residents have. So, with that being said, again, we feel this is going to be a top-notch development, it'll be a jewel in the township. My client is a taxpayer also, this will create additional revenue for the township, 167 sites, 40 condo units, tax revenue for the township goes for infrastructure, public services, it's all good. So, with that being said, again, I would, we're here to answer any questions and we would kindly request a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. So, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Supported by Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to bring it up to the board and if anybody has any questions, we'll start with Kathy Bosberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it was just addressed by Mr. Kalas, one of the questions I was going to ask that relates to, this is just a preliminary drawing that just describes how they would use it if we approved the rezoning request, is that correct? And it could, it might look different. And however it ends up looking, it would still have to comply with and be in alliance with the organizations, the public organizations that already, you know, he's talked about, and it might look different based on those engineering studies, is that correct, is my understanding?
That's correct. So, what's been submitted is a concept plan, so right now we're in the rezoning, the rezoning, and I omitted this from my presentation earlier, so I apologize. So, the board tonight is reviewing the plans, a recommendation will go to the township board for final, a final decision. So, after that, the applicant will, if the decision is favorable, they will then submit a site plan that is just a little bit more solid or confident in what they're proposing. And from there, it'll go through all the reviews that are needed by the departments at the state, the engineers here at the township, third-party reviews, all of that.
Thank you. And one other, one other thing, in the letter, I believe, from Mr. Kalas, the, there's a reference to access to the Salt River for the public for purposes of kayaking or help, whatever they would like to do to access the water there. Is that something that will always be in the plans?
It's proposed right now as a canoe kayak launching pad for the Salt River and it's part of the development for the residents of that development. There were some preliminary discussions, you know, if it goes, it can be donated, you know, dedicated, but right now it's part of the development for the benefit of the residents within, proposed, I should say, for the residents within that development.
Great, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it is so hard to hear when there's comments being made by the public.
Yeah, respectfully ask that you don't yell things out while we're trying to hear everything going back and forth, appreciate it. Eric Hyder? Ralph Jaworski, do you have anything?
Just a couple of things I just want to touch on, the bridge and the egress and ingress, I know that would come at a later date, but it seems like a lot of people brought that up, I recall it from past, I mean, what is the plans if you were to move forward with this with the egress and the bridge?
So, the roads, actually, we had discussions with the Macomb County Department of Roads. The roads will be public roads under their jurisdiction, as will the bridge. They've agreed to accept them preliminarily, so they will be responsible, they'll take care of the roads, anything happens to the bridge, which, you know, obviously typically doesn't happen, it's going to be built according to, you know, engineering standards, borings, everything, you know, pilings, whatever is necessary. So, the road commission will have jurisdiction over those. The ingress egress off 23 Mile is a boulevard, it's a boulevard ingress egress, there's numerous other subdivisions. And we also do propose, as you can see on the concept plan, emergency access drives. There was some concern about the drive off Baker Road there just south of Lot 1 being used for traffic of the development, it's not for traffic of the development, it's for emergency access in case fire trucks, ambulances have to get in there, as is the proposed access drive, emergency access drive on the west side of the property to the Salt River condos. So, you know, the, and if there was some discussion with the fire department, to the extent, you know, ingress egress, second access drive or emergency access drive can't be provided, there was discussion about fire suppression on the homes that are on the west side of the development. So, that's something, but again, that will all be dealt with during the site plan and engineering process.
Okay, so, the bridge and the roads would all be Macomb County?
Yes, we've had, our engineers have had preliminary discussions and they have no issue with accepting jurisdiction.
Okay, so, Macomb County roads?
Macomb County Department of Roads, yes.
Okay, so, any road through there, it's not a private development?
The roads will be public.
It's an open development that can be walked or biked or, okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
Just a few things. Talked about a site plan engineering study, you've talked about water mitigation and addressing the flooding concerns that we heard, we heard a lot about tonight. Are you also going to do a detailed traffic study? We heard some concerns about the traffic in the area, the infrastructure supporting this, this type of development and safety.
Well, the traffic study, the property is already zoned for single-family, we're actually proposing less density than if we were to come in and develop it under R1A, which are the larger lots. So, traffic study was not really necessary as part of the rezoning because the property is already zoned for single-family housing, we're just asking for lots that are between the R1A and the R1B and the, as the master plan indicated or indicates, and as the township's residential density plan indicates, our proposed 1.7, we're under two units per acre, 1.7 units per acre is actually on the lower end of the range between, which calls for 1.4 to 2.5 units per acre. So, with all that being said, a traffic study really is not required or really necessary under those facts.
It may not be required, would you be willing to do one anyways?
It's not going to tell you, I mean, it's, we're under the density for that, for that area, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Kerr?
No, I don't have any comments for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Renault?
Yeah, just a couple of things, one, because one of the residents actually asked a question that I was going to ask, so I was looking for an answer, what's the price point going to be on these houses?
So, again, the price point, this is all new construction.
Just ballpark, I mean, can't be.
So, the single, we all know the cost of construction nowadays, hopefully materials come down, you never know, but the price point on the single-family homes will probably be in the low 500 and the condos will be, you know, in the mid, higher 300s. So, there's variety there, obviously, it will cater to a larger segment of the market and, you know, it's a blended housing use and actually, it's consistent with what's around it, so.
And the, the single families, what's, what's the square footage on those?
The square footage, you know, again, it's consumer market-driven, but typically it'll be 2,400, 2,500, 3,100, you know, square feet, 3,200, depending on demand and, you know, some lots obviously will allow for bigger houses, others will have to have smaller footprints.
Right, no, no, that makes sense, I was just curious about what that was, okay. That's all the question I have for you, I did, there are a few things I did want to clear up, because I heard a number of the participants here this evening say a few things and I did want to clear a couple of things up. It was insinuated a couple of times that you all voted us into these positions and that's not accurate. In fact, there's only one person up here that actually gets voted and that's Mrs. Bosberg over there. The rest of us, we get appointed and we spend our time going around looking at these things. I've spent, I spent probably a good five or six hours going through all the paperwork, reading through it, writing up my notes, because we don't just show up here and just vote blindly. We all live here in Chesterfield and so, yeah, it's not just your home, it is our home as well, because we're required to be residents here. So, with that, I did want to point that out because, yeah, it just didn't seem obvious, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing that I want to, I want to say is we were repeatedly accused of not being, walking the property. As was stated in the beginning of the meeting, we don't answer questions up here until it's our opportunity. I was on that property, I've walked before, I've golfed, I've golfed there before, so yes, I have been and I know that other members have been as well. So, just to clear that up, we have been on the property. I have not been on the property since the golf course has been closed, it's not my property, I'm not going to trespass, so therefore I don't go on it. Please, please. I was respectful when you were speaking, please be respectful to me. Another individual brought up the burial grounds. Prior to, as was stated earlier, we do do a lot of our due diligence, we do do, look into the background, and I was concerned about that possibility of the burial grounds. I spoke with Ms. Bosberg, who is on the Historical Society, is part of the Historical Society, spoke with other people and actually got some, some really neat articles about the history of the Salt River. What the articles did state that, and of course, you know, it may not be completely true because it's history, is that there wasn't any burial grounds on that property. The burial grounds were actually more closer to 24 Mile Road. In fact, if anybody would like to see the articles, I can give them to you, it's great reading, it's really interesting of how the Native Americans utilized the Salt River for salt and how the English came in and took it and, anyways, in any event, if anybody would like to see the articles, I'd be more than glad to pass them on. I'd also like to ask the applicant, this is a little bit of a tough question, if in fact, the rezoning is approved, I mean, if we make the recommendation to the regular board, we do not make the decision, the final decision. There's been instances in the past where we'd make a recommendation to the board and they've gone the other direction. Is your client going to do the development or is this just going to be resold to another, another developer?
I'm sure a lot of you know Mr. Jarvis, he's been a member of the community, he is very excited about this product and this project. Every intention he and his son Matt have to develop and build the houses. Now, if someone comes along and says, you know, pie in the sky number, obviously, you know, we're all human beings, we look, you know, we look at that, but his intention is to develop that, he's fully invested, he owns the property. Again, as I indicated, he has the ability to develop it and that, you know, obviously we don't, things change, we don't know from today to tomorrow, but as we sit here today, it is fully his intention to develop and build houses on this property.
One last statement I'd like to make is, well, if in fact he does go to site plan review, I'll make that statement then. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment, there was four letters that were sent to the township and they will be noted and made part of the record, they couldn't be here tonight. And at this time, the chair doesn't have any, any questions. So, I'm kind of thinking what we need to do is, I'm thinking we table this, we've got to table it and we'll have to determine for how long and then we'll bring it back.
Don't we tip, we typically wait two weeks to do the voting before we do any sort of tabling.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, the planning commission bylaws do state for a public hearing that you'll, once you close the public hearing, the decision will be made at the following meeting, so unless action was taken to do otherwise, that's typically what the rules would state.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table, I'm sorry, postpone the decision this evening until our next meeting, our next scheduled meeting.
Support?
Eric?
Support?
Motion made by Rick LaBelle, supported by Eric Hyder, to postpone a decision until our next meeting.
Would that be on the 17th of June?
June 17th is correct.
Thank you.
Motion was made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, we'll be back here and at the next meeting and.
Thank you.
We'll dive back in.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
One comment, what do we know about the eagle's nest? That's a concern about what happened with that one.
If anybody wants to leave, we'll wait until you exit before we continue the meeting.
Yeah, I was going to, but I wasn't. No, not here.
If you, if you folks could make your way out if you're going to leave, we have to wrap
up the meeting, appreciate it.
Sir, it's not proper to approach.
We're not done with the meeting yet.
We're still, we're just giving you the opportunity to leave, that's all.
So, there are no regular agenda items tonight, there are no presentations, reports, or discussions. We have a three-minute limit, if any of the commissioners have anything to say, Mr. Brokaw?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Kerr? All set?
I'm good.
Mr. Renault?
All set.
Ms. Bosberg?
No additional comments.
Mr. Hyder? Mr. Jaworski?
No additional comments.
Mr. Klonowski? Mr. LaBelle?
No.
And the chair doesn't have anything, and I remembered everybody's name this time without looking at my stupid list. So, with that, I guess we'll adjourn the meeting, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:45. Have a motion by Mr. Leonard, supported by Mr. Renault, to adjourn the meeting, all in favor?